If I could just thank you very much, Mel. We'll fire up round two. You're more than welcome to stay. We've got another couple of hours. If you'd like to join in.
We'll see ya.
All right. Great. Party poopers, right? Party poopers.
Well, Jim, we're a little bit tonight.
So we will officially call the town board work session to order for March 11th, 2020. We'll let the minutes reflect that we have just four members tonight. Councilwoman Debbie Draw is not with us. She's out of town and we might be part of, so we'll let the minutes reflect that. Thank you very much. We do have, and I'll let Sue get caught up with us, we do have the minutes for February 26th, 2020 before us and would entertain a motion of approval of those minutes.
Sue.
Seconded. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion, comments, changes, upgrades, or otherwise? Okay, seeing none. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you, Sue. The monthly reports we have on the board should have within their email just about all of the monthly reports. I think we're missing one from Justice Court and one from Personnel, and I'm sure that they'll be in by our Friday deadline, so be on the lookout for those. Thank you to the department heads that have gotten all of their monthly reports in. We have no hearings this evening. We do have a couple of guests. Brianna Woody requesting a streamline approval of a home care residence at 1771 Penfield Road. And Mr. Costello, if you would please tee that up for the board.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. With us this evening, we have Brianna Woody. She is proposing to lease the property at 1771 Penfield Road, and I'll let her explain in a minute what she wants to do there. For those of you that are newer, the property, Penfield Road, is the property just immediately to the east of the Matz Lane terminus that comes out on the Penfield Road there, and Dr. DePietro's on the other side. The property's been for sale and leased recently, and she has gotten the opportunity to be able to take it. I'm going to let you tell them exactly what you'd like to do.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Brianna Woody. Here, I'm anticipating an opening in family type homes located here in Penfield at 1771 Penfield Road. Over the years of service, I've obtained several certifications, with my most recent being a certified nurse assistant, where I am recently employed full-time at Hillhaven. Ever since I've been there, I've been working hard and dedicated, so, sorry, excuse me. I've decided to go far to open a business in healthcare to continue to help those in need. A family type home are homes for adults, seniors, providing long-term residential care to a maximum of four individuals who are mentally and unstablely unable to live alone. A typical resident may be 18 years or older, frail, elderly, intellectual, disabled, or blind, who require supervision or assistance. Some services that I will provide will be personal care, housekeeping, laundry services, three nutritious meals, breakfast, lunch, and dinner, and snacks, 24/7 supervision, just to name a few. The Office of Children and Family Services in New York State will oversee this program and make routinely regular visits to ensure compliance law as I meant.
Tony and I had a chance to visit the site the other day in the Brianna and the owner of the property. We walked through the building. The building's kind of been remodeled over the last year or so, and was most recently leased to a lady who lived on the second floor. If you remember, her son was going to run a small office on the first floor, but that never came to be. And then she moved out, and it's been vacant for a few months now, I guess. But the place is in pretty good shape. We'd have to have the fire marshal go through. We talked to Brianna about going through the site to make sure that it meets all the fire codes and all that business with respect to, you know, getting people in and out safely in the event of a fire, whatever the case may be. This is kind of tantamount to a group home setting more than it is a business setting in that they're going to have supervision on the site at all times. They will eat their meals together on a day-to-day basis, and they will be, you know, taken care of on a day-to-day basis, so there won't be people coming and going without being supervised to do so.
Just families. It's a family-type setting, so everything at our own private homes will be there, just more comfortable setting at their needs and for their requests, their own personalized rooms.
Brianna, one of the things you mentioned was the certifications and the oversight by the state. Is it just state, is it county and state that provide either the licensing or the support of the oversight?
The Office of Children and Family Services, just New York State.
So it's New York State.
You were going to have somebody from the, when the department came through, did they give you any recommendations?
The house is beautiful and it's doable. We just have to get the fire department in to approve it for fire safety.
Do we have any documentation of that? Well, I will. I mean, they generally provide that to us after they just walked through it the other day. So, oh, it was today?
Yes.
So we'll get some type of documentation for that. I'm sure they'll be sending you something which you can relay to us as well.
So this is in the Four Corners District zoning, which requires the town board to review anything that happens either by way of new build and/or new use. So what that home has been used for historically has been a single-family home. Then I think, as Jim indicated, there was going to be an office and an apartment up above. And then what's being proposed here, so you've got three bedrooms upstairs and an office?
Yes.
Okay, so is what you're proposing, three bedrooms and an office upstairs? And then the house is somewhat of an open floor plan for kitchen dining, living room, if you will. And then there's a room in the front, or, excuse me, a room in the back of the building that comes off the parking lot, and that's kind of used as the main entrance because it's all in one grade as you come in. So I think what Jim is asking of the board is that, does this qualify for streamline? Or would the board like to see a formal public hearing to come before the board?
I think it's a streamline, but, you know, I have difficulty even thinking about this. You don't have, you know, a plan or anything. We're not that knowledgeable about these homes, and we'd have to have, see a layout, you know, more information and all that. But it certainly doesn't impact the surrounding area like in anything that the neighbors should be worried about or anything of that nature. But, yeah, that makes sense.
So are you?
I think we could streamline it.
Okay. So would you like to see more information? Do you need to see more information?
For something of this nature, I mean, we, like I said, they just went through it and everything.
Would you like to see the report that's generated?
Yeah, something along those lines, reports.
To ask her to basically draw a floor plan would be quite costly.
It'd be nice, too, yeah.
But to get the reports in from the agency to make sure that, you know, they're comfortable. It'd be good to have.
Yeah, I think it'd be.
Brianna, in the email you mentioned 24-hour care, sorry, 24-hour supervision. Who's providing the 24-hour supervision?
Myself, if not, I'll have a service there.
Okay, so is that something where you are also staying there overnight, or as a staff member, or somebody's going to be assigned to be there during?
I'll be there overnight.
Okay, okay.
Are there any other facilities like this that you're aware of?
Here in Monroe County, we have five facilities like this.
Any in the town of Penfield, or is it?
The Linden House is the closest. The rest are in the city.
Okay.
The Linden House is in the city?
They have the Norton Place in the city, the Linden House, and two others are like amended.
Is there any handicap accessibility issues with bedrooms being on the second floor, or, you know, people that are looking at your notice, who could possibly be there, you know, disabled or semi, that type of thing? Is there any changes you would have to make then, or are you saying that the state or the county has already approved its use?
See, everyone has to be steady on their feet and be able to evacuate in case of a fire. They just need my assistance. Like, if they're unsteady and they may fall backwards, then I'll be there for support to catch them.
If you were steady, and for some reason you broke a hip or something, and you had to be in a wheelchair, how would you address, do they have to go to another location?
I will have to contact the city, the Office of Children and Family Services first, and get approval. Yes.
Yeah.
And then they'll tell me whether the person can stay or if they have to be amended Strictly canes, walkers, other light adaptive equipment. Our wheelchairs won't be accepted because they can't get up the stairs to their bedroom.
So in order to be a resident of that home, will they have to demonstrate that they are able to manage the stairs?
Upon arriving, they will have a mental evaluation done with me and also by their doctor, and they'll then just see if they can get up the stairs, will all that be discussed.
But that's all, that's all pre, before they're actually assigned to the home? They have to go through that evaluation, you know, by the doc and by others to make sure that they're fit, enabled, capable to be able to reside there?
Yes.
And then, just I think following off of Mr. Costello's comment, that if, if for some reason they cannot, they lose mobility, or they have some other type of an illness and what have you, and can no longer manage those stairs, then they would be moved to another location or another facility?
Yes.
Okay.
Have you given any thought to having like a lift, a chairlift to the upstairs?
This program specifically is non-medical, so stairlift won't be acceptable.
It would be difficult in that house to do it either, even the hallway is not wide enough to accommodate a chairlift going up the staircase.
Okay.
I guess, I guess you could, I mean, worst case, the back portion as you walk in, that is really large.
Yes.
I guess that could be converted at some point in time to a bedroom if need be, but it isn't at this point in time.
Board, other questions, comments?
Adequate parking on the site. They just put a new parking lot in. Probably more than adequate for what you would need.
Absolutely.
So that won't be a problem.
Okay.
I think, Tony, I just would like to offer that if we're going to move with a streamline, which I'm okay with, that before we do any official action, that we get that letter, that documentation from the state. Not doubting your capabilities or anything, but when you're dealing with state agencies in healthcare, you just want to make sure that they're okay with that site before we give formal approval to start using that site. So I just would like to make sure that we get that, it's acceptable, and that that location and what's being proposed meets their standards, so forth.
Is it a motion? Should I second that?
I'm sorry, before you do that, though, I assume that they made recommendations to you regarding, you know, hardware, lighting, and all the exit signs and all that business?
Yes.
So they're going to require you to install that before?
No, it's absolutely outside. It's just the fire department will approve and set for fire safety.
So we have to have the fire marshal go through that as well?
And the fire marshal.
Okay. Do we have any idea when a letter, when you, I'm sorry, when you would receive a letter from the state saying that they have inspected it and it's passed inspection for the proposed use?
They told me today the fire department does that.
Okay.
They pretty much visualized it and approved it, and they said the fire department will wrap it up to give me the okay.
Okay.
I'll have them go through.
Okay.
Well, so I guess I would like, I would like to have that in writing. So again, just to make sure we're protecting the town and protecting the residents, that I would like to have at least a letter of acknowledgement from the state, even if the state says, "We've been there, we've inspected it, it meets our requirements, however we rely on the fire marshal to give it its final approval." I think that goes hand in glove with their letter and then the report from the fire marshal.
And it protects you as well.
Yes.
That's a good point.
Okay.
So I'll work with the fire marshal, you work on getting the letter.
Okay. Great.
Okay. So I think Councilwoman Cole asked if that was a motion, Mr. Moore?
I would like to make that a motion.
All right, second that.
And she seconded it, okay. I'll ask board any additional comments, questions that you may have. I'd ask staff, any additional information that you'd like to have added to the record that hasn't already been added to the record?
No, I'll get that information back to you, though, so that you have that prior to us issuing any conditional use permit for the site.
Perfect, thank you. And I'll ask the applicant, any additional information that you would like to provide to the board that you haven't already, that you feel is pertinent to the application?
Not at this moment. Any more questions for me?
Okay. So there's a motion on the table to approve as a streamline, subject to a number of conditions. That includes getting a letter from the state, getting a review by the fire marshal, and then just making sure that the property meets what is intended for the use by the state Office of Children's Services.
Yes.
Okay, great. Seeing no further discussion, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. And then I would just ask to work with Mr. Costello. I think one last question, I apologize, one last question. Do you have plans for any signage on the property?
No, absolutely not.
Okay, so we'll continue to look and blend in with the area? There's no signage planted in the front or anything like that?
No loud noise, there won't be no hanging in the front because of the side street for safety, everything will be done in the backyard where the lights.
Okay, all right. All right, very good, thank you. All right, we'll look forward to receiving the materials and, you know, good luck with moving forward with this comfort facility for seniors.
Thank you, everyone.
All right, great.
You're very nice.
Thank you, you too. Okay, we will move on. Our next item, Newfeld, potential use and improvement of town-owned land of Autumn Oak Circle. And before Mr. Valentine, before I turn it over to Mr. Valentine, I just want to make sure that the board understands how this matter came to the board, because this typically is a planning board matter that we go through the process. As a result of a sketch plan review that was done back on February 19th, was done back in February, I don't know if it was the 19th, this letter is dated the 19th, so it may be a day or two after, so I apologize if I don't have the planning board date, but back in a few days before the 19th, there was a sketch plan review before the planning board. The planning board, as they listened to the discussion by the applicant and the neighbors, the planning board prepared a letter that went to Insight Land Development, Inc., and BME Associates and Insight Land Development, Inc., Mr. Newfeld. Under that, under that letter, item number two indicates that the applicant shall coordinate with town staff to arrange a time to meet with the town board at a future work session meeting to discuss a proposed proposal for a regional stormwater management detention pond facility on town-owned lands at 46 Autumn Oak Circle. The proposed improvements would require the approval of the town board. If the town board does not accept the applicant's request, the proposed cluster plan layout shall be revised to show a stormwater treatment facility exclusively within the project site with legal access rights for the town to inspect and maintain the pond facility. So that's, that's how it got here, and so I'm going to ask Mr. Valentine to tee it up further from there.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. Passed around kind of an aerial sketch, just to kind of get the board oriented to where we are and what we're looking at. As the supervisor indicated, this is currently pending before the planning board. They've gone through the sketch plan phase. Mr. Newfeld and his team are looking to move ahead to the preliminary final. As part of that, he's looking at how does he handle his stormwater, and as part of that, he can accommodate it either on his property or at staff's suggestion. We suggested, is there a possibility to look at to amending the pond that we have currently off of Autumn Oak Circle? We have a pond that was put in in, I believe, the mid-'60s, '70s. It doesn't meet current standards. At some point, it will need to be cleaned out, maintained by our facilities. So is this an opportunity that, one, we can potentially consolidate rather than having two ponds nearby each other, have one pond, one control structure, and then at Mr. Newfeld's costs, he could do some upgrades to our pond, bring it up to current 2020 standards, as well as add on whatever area that he needs to that. So looking at the aerial photo, his property's on the west side. You can see the open space of the town property, that's why it's pending before the town board. Is this board comfortable of, like, we don't have all the final design in details, look at amending that pond? BME Associates would have to go through the proper review, look at the watershed in the area, what the drainage source is, but located on that, on that property, again, possibly gives us one outfall structure, one pond location, and also can potentially get us a deeper storm sewer. There's been many drainage concerns from the neighbors in the area, and if we can bring storm pipes deeper through his property, we may be able to hopefully alleviate some of the drainage issues for the surrounding properties. So if it comes in deeper, we can reach to the north, to the west, and potentially accommodate additional areas that don't have storm sewer drainage now, he could bring additional drainage into that, that space. He's here tonight, I think he has the sketch plan, if you want to get into that, but I thought just kind of showing the aerial photo of, you know, what is town property. There's been some question, concern, went out in the public that this area was restricted because of clay or something else. This, looking at what the Pondview Lane is in Autumn Oak Circle, was done under, was at that time, Town Lot 281, which is now Town Lot 278. So they did a cluster development. Under the cluster development, they have smaller lots than what our zoning requires, and then it left an open space area which accommodated the pond as well as some open space land. So it's not, it is restricted against further development of homes, you can't subdivide it to build new homes, but it is town-owned land, and it needs to be amended for either additional pond area cleaned, maintained. There is no prohibition against that. It wasn't, it wasn't restricted from that. So there's been some little bit misnomer that, you know, that is restricted against anything happening there. It is restricted against subdivision, it is restricted against building of new home lots under Town Lot 281 now 278, you know, but it could be utilized. There's been some questions about clay in the area. I'm not sure, back in the '70s, you know, there was no sanitary sewers out here, so with clay, you may have had some difficulties with septic systems. Obviously, we have sanitary sewer, you know, in different areas. Mr. Newfeld looking to connect into, I think, on Autumn Oak and would fully sewer his property. So he's looking at, you know, sanitary sewers through there, and we have the sewers to accommodate that.
So it needs to get fixed. What, our pond? What if his plan doesn't go through the planning board and doesn't happen, then we still have to fix that pond?
Ultimately, yeah. I mean, all our ponds that we own, we inspect them, we have to inspect them every three years, so between Eric's crew and our crew, we go out and inspect all of our ponds. The watershed committee looks at them, you know, it's an ongoing, we own almost 200 ponds within the town, so it's an ongoing effort. So over time, we have to continually dredge them out, clean them, do updates, mow them, you know, Eric and his team, you know, mow them all, make sure they're functional, we inspect the outfall structures to make sure they're operating properly. But just over time, as anything, it requires maintenance. It'll silt in a little bit over time, we get some tree growth on it, you know, so it definitely requires some maintenance. So part of our thought was, you know, if he was to amend, you know, his pond to our pond, have him go in at his cost and, you know, clean that out, you know, upgrade the outfall structure if need be, if any modifications need to be done to that. Current standards add an aquatic bench on ponds. Before, it kind of just went in, was a deep pool area. You know, now you're trying to make, it's a twofold effort. One is an aquatic bench, you provide a planting area that's about six inches underwater, so enough that during, you know, different times it's underwater, other times it's not, good area for cattails to grow, other aquatic plants, that's what actually takes up fertilizers. So people have fertilizers on the lawns, it washes into the pond, that's what does the water quality treatment. The other part of aquatic benches, if, you know, if there's a small child nearby, you know, if you have a deep pond, then all of a sudden, you know, they've been in, they wouldn't be able to get back out. So aquatic bench, one, adds an area that creates cattails around it to kind of create a buffer of anybody getting into it, and two, it makes it, you know, a walkable area so, you know, somebody didn't actually fall in and, you know, couldn't get back out. So it's kind of a twofold upgrade to this. So currently, I mean, it is in compliance, there is no retro program since we have to go back and do this, but obviously, any new maintenance we do to it, that would fall on, you know, town crews to upgrade it if we have to go in and clean it and do maintenance on it.
So go ahead, I'll understand.
Yeah, it sounds like it's a good benefit for the town to do that, but I still feel like we're getting ahead of ourselves because it's before planning board for the application. It's not our...
And he's just looking, is the town board supportive? I'll let him speak. You know, is the town board supportive of this is a possibility to do this? He has a lot more design and calculations to do, but he's looking, do I start designing for over here, or do I forget this and I design? If it's a no, he'll design it on his property, and he does the hydraulic calculations for his property and his alone. If he's doing it over here, you know, he's just looking for some direction from this board. Is it a possibility? Yep, then he'll go back and do his design, we've still got a lot of review, and he's got to provide hydraulic calculations, he's got to show us that it works, but I don't, again, don't want to speak for him, but I'm sure he just doesn't want to pay to design it twice in two different locations, just because. The board says no, he's got direction, he'll go on his way, he'll continue before the planning board. If you say yes, again, goes back to the planning board, he'll just focus his energy to, you know, what it would take to upgrade our facility.
It isn't our intent to have anyone, individual or group, spend engineering monies twice. So it comes down, I guess, to the discussion around comfort level. If the board does not want to see our area touched, left as is for now, that doesn't mean at some point, and I can't speak for Mark from a priority standpoint, but as he mentioned, we do have approximately 200 ponds in the town. We inspect them on a regular basis, and then we tackle improvements, whether that be digging out, cleaning out, whether that be going in and working on the outfall structure, what have you. So at some point, maybe not this year, maybe not next year, maybe not for the next five years, I don't, I don't know that, the existing pond that we have, we may not do any work, but at some point, we may have to. So I guess it really gets down to the comfort level of this board. Do you want to see the pond facilities solely with on, on the developer's property? Or, and I guess the question would be, Mark, if the pond gets incorporated into our current pond, does that provide any advantage to the developer by way of additional lives?
No. No, he's gone through what is conventional plan, so he has to show that he complies with the zoning as it currently is. His conventional plan shows the pond on his property. He's established that unit total. Whether the ponds on his property or our property, it does not garner any more additional lots for him. It's just, is it another spot for us to have to maintain over there, and we have to plan access into it, another control structure, you know, maintenance of that? Now we've got, you know, two facilities right next to each other that we've got to maintain in the future.
Mark, you spoke about our pond, and if we allow that to kind of come into our area there, it's potentially going to provide a benefit to the residents around from a drainage standpoint. In your opinion, you feel if that pond does not come onto our property and it's on his, will there still be a benefit to the neighboring parcels?
I mean, I just kind of showed on my sketch, and it's not elaborate, our pond is here, just the grade is a little bit lower as you go across, so if he's coming off this property, he can make that pipe deeper, come back in. I know we've been looking at, you know, potentially extending a sewer to get to the other side of Jackson Road, some drainage issues there. I'm walking the properties on Friday with some of the neighbors on Thorn Tree on the north side, so just the option of coming in with a deeper pipe up here and deeper this way, it may give us more opportunity to extend further out. This would just be on his property, it's uphill slightly, so it would just be shallower. You know, I just don't know if we can get as deep going, you know, further out to other properties.
If it stays on his property?
Yeah, and I don't have exact numbers, I can't say we can't get there or not, but I do know it's a higher elevation, so if he can go further down, deeper, obviously, we can bring that pipe back, you know, deeper in the ground, so you've got a little bit more distance we can run.
But you're confident that there would be some benefit if our pond was redone?
Yeah, I mean, it would definitely bring it up to our, you know, to current standards.
Yeah, and I haven't been in there an awful lot, but I think the times I have been, it seems like it's dry, I mean, at least from visual standpoint, is it going to change the pond to always have standing water, or is it?
It will. Most of the current ponds do have standing water, just from a pure water quality standpoint. This one does have water at times, and it has an area that it does fill up into the overall town property, not all of it, but a portion of it, and it's noted on some of the plans, call it a 100-year flood plain elevation. Slight misnomer, but it's a 100-year pond elevation, which all of our ponds need to be designed for. So any new pond, you have to look at, you know, what does it handle typically water quality as the one-year storm, so the largest storm bank in any one year, it washes the debris... So the largest storm event in any one year, it washes the debris off the road, it washes off the oils, the phosphorus, the nitrogen, and that's what you're trying to treat for the water quality. And then as you get to bigger storms, the water quality kind of falls off, and now you're just trying to contain it. So it becomes a big bathtub. You just kind of fill up, and then, you know, it drains down, and you're metering it out. So yeah, right now, it doesn't hold water often. We've had pictures submitted showing, you know, it does fill up in major storm events. The 91 ice storm, you remember, that did have water in it, you know, would accommodate that, you know, as well. But some of the new designs are a little bit different. You kind of usually have a four-bay area that helps with maintenance. Eric and his crew don't have to dredge the whole pond. Typically, it's a splash area that, you know, the pipe comes out, you give it an area to settle. It's a little bit smaller, the sediment settles out. It's easier for Eric and his crew to go out with an excavator, just clean up that one area, and then not the whole pond. So there are a little bit...
Or even two ponds.
Or two ponds, or advancement in, you know, I wouldn't say technology, but advancement in pond designs, that you kind of have four bays, you have the aquatic benches. So yeah, we'll have some more standing water, it'll have more vegetation, you know, around it, but that's what it's treating the water quality for.
So if this board, if this board elected, Mark, to have the pond solely on the developer's property down the road, whatever that timeframe is, what would the town have to do with the current pond, recognizing it went in in sometime in the late 60s, early 70s timeframe, in order to bring it up to current standards today? I mean, recognizing that it's operated under the way it was originally built. But to bring it up to current standards today, what would we have to do?
First and foremost, you probably need to modify the outfall structure. Most outfall structures now have an inverted pipe. It's hard to see on them, they're typically under the water, but you've got an inverted, kind of counterintuitive, but it's going down into it with like a three- or four-inch pipe. The intent is to take cooler water off the bottom of the pond than the top. The top water gets heated in the summertime, so if you have an orifice, the water gets heated by the sun. You have a storm event, it pushes that slug through. You take the hot water, it goes straight out of the pond, and then, you know, has issues for the fish and the bugs and amphibians and stuff down the stream. So if you see once, you'd have an inverted pipe to the bottom, so the cooler water on the bottom of the pond is the first to go out. So you've got a slug of water that comes in, it doesn't immediately go out the orifice. Through hydraulics, it pushes it up the pipe and then flows out. So we have to modify the outfall structure. Given more detail, you probably want to know about pond design, but supervisor asked, but we'd also have to...
Get that, Tom?
There'll be a quiz later.
Absolutely.
Obviously, you know, we'd have to go in and dredge the pond, we'd have to add four-bay areas. So if we go in and do a retrofit, you know, it's kind of a redevelopment, we'd have to do some, it's not simply just to clean it out, we'd have to bring it up to, you know, current standards. Add that aquatic bench around the outside, so you have to go in and, you know, kind of cut that bench area in, add some four bays, modify the outfall structure. It's just kind of a initial, you know, look at it as well as assess, is it still functional? Is it meeting the current requirements? Is anything that's impacted it around it?
No, and I appreciate kind of the high level. I'm not looking for, you know, that final design here tonight, but I think it was just curious, you know, to, it's not as simple as just going in and scooping out a little bit of silt, and, and that then it's back to where it was normally.
I mean, if it was back to where it was in 1975, it wouldn't meet current standards.
Right. Okay, all right.
Tony, real quick, just, just a couple of thoughts. I mean, I'm also concerned about the existing, I guess I want to say failure of the current pond on town land right now. I think we heard a couple of residents the other day that live on Autumn Oak or live on Pondview Lane that mentioned that that whole area is kind of failing, if I remember correctly from, from watching the meeting, or that the, the storage of the water is failing. It's not doing what it really needs to be doing. And so a part of me sits here and says that, you know, you can go with two options, whether the, whether the pond goes on the proposed property that's being purchased or on the town land, and what's the benefit of either or? And if the pond goes on the town prop, I'm sorry, if the town goes on the proposed property being sold, it's not going to have any impact on houses, more, more houses or less houses. But yet, it's going to cause two ponds right next to each other, which kind of doesn't make any sense at this point. If the pond goes on the town-owned property, which some of that property is already set for a pond, not all of it, because the property kind of slopes down from the south going to the north, actually, the south is higher than it is on the north end. But yet, the property that's being proposed to be built out doesn't add any more houses to it. So, you know, what is the actual benefit to the town? What's the benefit to the community? And I start to lean towards having it, having the developer build out, fix, repair, modernize the town's property, because that would be the better community benefit at the end of the day, and not impact any more or any less houses on the property, as it was discussed before. And if that does happen with having the town or having the developer improve the existing town, you know, drainage pond, then there is benefit to the residents on Autumn Oak or the residents on Pondview for the potential for better drainage from their property, just better drainage in that general area that was developed back in the early 70s than what they're currently getting today. And so I look at it from a community benefit perspective, you know, selfishly from the town perspective, inefficiencies, in saving monies, in having public works going out and having to do this work. You know, the developer can do it as a part of a negotiated deal, and then all the residents in the general area benefit from it, from having an appropriate, up-to-date pond that drains properly. And so I'm, I guess at this point, I'm kind of leaning towards giving my approval, if you want it, for the developer to go and start looking at what would need to be done and how that works out. I'm not going to pretend I'm an engineer by any means, and there's other people that can do that, and then provide us, you know, a summary of what is going to be the community benefit at the end of the day. I think we kind of know what the town benefit's going to be, but what will be the neighborhood benefit? And I think that's important, looking at this process moving forward, is that this proposed new development is a part of this overall neighborhood and community. And if we can make the drainage in this general area better tomorrow than what it is today, I think that is a part of a community benefit, not the entire community benefit, but a part of that. And so I just need to get my arms around a little bit more, I'm not asking for that tonight, of, you know, will these, will the drainage be better on Autumn Oak or on Pondview with this plan moving forward than what we currently have today? So that's, I just want to state that for the record and consideration moving forward.
No, I totally agree with you. The thing, I think you articulate it better than I did. It makes sense. My only concern always is like, you know, it's before the planning board on this level. You don't want anybody saying, oh, the town board embraces this, so, you know, say the town board supports this proposal. No, we support, possibly support having the pond fixed there if, and if he gets approval, that being the pond to look at.
Well, I don't think that, yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead, go ahead.
But, you know, you just don't want to be pigeonholed. You know how people get sometimes? They think that if you say something good about a proposal, it means your, the town board already supports it. But this, if you're going to look at a pond, as opposed to creating a whole new one, it does make sense to look at the existing one and the amenities to fix that up for the better met to the whole and potentially add to the people that are living there now in the community in addition to those who would be living there if the proposal was passed.
And that's why I said if this moves forward, because it does go before the planning board, it does not go before the town board.
Exactly.
I don't know if this is going forward or not. But if it did, then that's why I think Rudy, the developer, is here today to see where we stand on the potential of, you know, improving the town pond and the benefit to the overall neighborhood with drainage, which I think was important to a lot of the neighbors that came to the public information meeting that was held. At least that's, you know, what I heard, is, is some of their concerns, it certainly wasn't all of their concerns, but some of their concerns, and this may address some of those concerns about drainage in that general neighborhood area. I don't know if this is going to go forward or not. That's up to the developer to decide if they want to make the investment moving forward. But I would propose that that gets some serious consideration, because I do think that there's the potential for community benefit. And it doesn't matter. The house number, apparently from what I'm being told, is the same, whether it's on the proposed property potentially to be purchased or whether it's not. So if it's, if there's no difference there, why would we not consider what a overall better benefit to the town, but an overall benefit to the neighborhood as far as drainage goes is a community benefit?
I agree.
That's kind of how I'm looking at it right now.
So I just want to make sure that I'm...
In the same...
In the right, in the right place here. I think right, right now, my sense is, is that the developer is at a crossroads. Okay? His crossroads are, I pick up the phone and I call my engineer to design a pond on my property, or I pick up the phone and design a prop, design a pond on our property. So I think that's what he's looking for. And I think from his end of things, and I'm not going to speak for him, we'll give him an opportunity to comment, but he just needs to know which direction, so he isn't doing engineering twice on this. So if we say, you know what, it looks good on town property, then he's going to move forward, I believe, with that, because I think his intent ultimately is to submit preliminary, I think Mark indicated, submit preliminary plans to the, to the planning board. He just needs to know which, which direction to design to. So I think that's, that's the issue on the table for us. Either, either yes for us or no for us. Thank you. And again, so, Mark, I just, I want to just make sure I understood what, what you had shared.
Yep. And I see Mr. Newfeld can chime in, but I think that's what he's looking, just his direction as he moves ahead of which way he's going. And obviously, he's got a lot more design to do. His engineers got a lot more hydraulic analysis to do and calculations to submit and everything else. So obviously, we've got a lot more due diligence and don't have those final details. But if the board is supportive of, you know, looking at it on town property, that gives him direction, and then, obviously, then we'll, we'll work with him and his team to make sure he's got what he needs from our end as far as our mapping, what we have, and what we expect, you know, to be submitted for his, his design, drainage and design reports.
I mean, ultimately, we know, you know, our pond needs to be improved, you know, no matter what, sooner than later. I'd love to be able to tell you that we can get to it this summer or, you know, in the near future. We do have a number of other kind of drainage projects that we've been waiting on permits for a while, depending on whether, you know, I don't know exactly when we would be able to, you know, kind of do this. If his project moved forward, you know, it would benefit us and potentially get those improvements done sooner.
Mr. Newfeld, any comments that you would like to provide to the board that we haven't already kicked around?
Just two little things. I know the board's been here a long time, had a long evening. I went for you with a lot of mapping details, but what BME did, we kind of went a little further than we should, but we wanted to be sure that when we came to this board and staff and made assumptions that we had hard data, which we do now have. So I know you weren't prepared to look at this, but it outlines very nicely exactly what the town would be getting that would work. The main structure, you've all seen that big, big grassed area. Basically, it would stay as it is. The center of it, about, between Eric there, there would be two linear ponds, that would be the wet pond. So most of the grass would be just like they have it. The two center ponds would be the four bays and the deeper pond. And the elevations working off of your pond will allow the entire area to come down three feet, which is, is huge. So we can design our pond, it will work, it will be legal, it will meet all requirements. If we use your pond, the entire surrounding area, static water drops by three feet. So these people's water problem goes away, the two residents to the north...
Rudy, when you say these people, who are these people?
You have three residents here that...
The cul-de-sac on...
Got it.
They don't really have standing water in their yards, but they have a woods, which, of course, neighbors like to take the trees away. So they have some standing water here, there's a swale they put in, and it works okay, but they do have some standing water in the wet season.
You're behind 36, 40, and 44.
Exactly.
Yeah, okay.
So using that pond, Mr. Yanda has calculated that our static water will drop three feet lower than what it is today or what we have, and our pond will not accommodate your drainage issue here. It's just, it's at about ground level. This way, you'll accommodate all the drainage issues that they have. Now, we won't be going offsite, but by containing about 82% of the water that right now, it just does this, and ends up right here, and then it goes around, we're going to be taking 80% of that water and going right straight into the pond. So the neighbors never want to hear that at a public hearing, but it will make a huge impact to the surrounding drainage.
In a positive way.
Huge, in a positive way, yeah. And this piece of data, again, is not relevant to the board's decision, but just so you have a number, the pond work, and we're not union people, so we don't have to pay union wages, the upgrades will be about $100, $110,000. Some of that's mitigated. If I have to put it on my own, it'll probably cost us about 30-ish. So it's about $70,000 more to create it there, but at the, the impact is quite large. And I don't know what the union rates or how you guys would have to price that, but just so you have a dollar in mind, that's what it's going to cost us.
So that brings me to my next question. So I'm going to preface the fact that my wife's, my wife refers, and daughters refer to me as chief. I like to think that I'm frugal.
I like that.
So if I'm in your shoes, if I'm in your shoes, and I can spend 30 to make this work, or I can spend $100,000, why am I, why am I spending $70,000 more out of my pocket?
Two...
I get the fact that that gets passed on to homeowners, that price of development and everything, but why am I, why am I spending that extra 70K?
Two reasons, and I did mention to the other board member at our other meeting, thank you for clarifying that this direction was not based on us getting something. We were getting what we were getting anyway. When we first started this, staff and BME engineers talked about it, looked at all the issues, and staff said, would you consider doing this? Well, it makes a better design, better overall project, and yes, yes, we would. And I've been in Penfield for a very long time, and I have a couple of other very big projects. So the town has always been cooperative with us, and if it's something that makes a better project for us, costs us a little more upfront, we're happy to do it. There's a limit to that, of course, where the value still has to work, but for 20 lots, these homes are going to be starting in the 450 to 600 range, so there's enough value there that it's not going to preclude us from making it a success, and we're happy to do it. And it's a better project.
And I appreciate that, but also, you know, to be perfectly transparent, it also makes those properties more valuable.
Yes.
You know, so, which, you know, it can be a good thing, but also, it does make those properties more valuable, not having a retention pond in their backyard, you know, because we all know that the beautiful retention pond that people buy, and they think that they're going to have wine and cheese and enjoy this wonderful waterfront in about five years, is no longer a wonderful waterfront with cheese and wine and...
That's true.
Birds and ducks and stuff like that.
However, however, if you drive by Barclay Park, which this board was kind enough to work with us on, and you just pull in there and go onto my little grandparent fishing dock, it's surrounded by boulders, there's a fountain in it. Now, that's an HOA, so it's a little bit different, but we go through pretty good lengths that if buyers are going to have a pond, it looks good. And I understand your concern, that isn't always the case, but if you look at the ones that are on our properties, as long as we're in control of them, they're, they're pretty nice. That was not a factor. If these two big lots had a pond, we would have done the same thing. We would have boulder lined them and made them a real aesthetic piece.
Well, I mean, I go back to my original statements again. I mean, I don't control what the planning board does, I don't control what Rudy does as a developer, whether he moves forward or he doesn't move forward, that's up to him. I look at it as there is no difference in the number of houses, whether... I look at it as, there is no difference in the number of houses, whether it's on the proposed property or on our property. And if Rudy, you know, if this town board decides that if it's going to go forward, should it go forward, that we're going to get a community benefit out of it, going back to what I just, you know, said before, not to belabor the point, better drainage for the neighborhood, better drainage for the town, no cost to the town, so it's saving taxpayers some money there, then I tend to lean towards making the recommendation, or at least Andy Moore is okay, with some type of moving forward with using the town land since it is already designed as a retention pond, which is failing at this point.
Well, if that's a motion, I second it.
Rudy, real quick, can you just run past me again? If, if we decide to allow you to move forward, what is the visual going to be on this property right now? As I know it today, because I live right up the street from here, as I know it today, that when it rains over a period of time or whatever, the southern area of this property becomes very damp, you know, it, it may be at times a foot, it may be just a couple inches. I don't know about these two deeper areas because they're just full of cattails, you can't really get a good visual on that, but what are you proposing that would occur? What's the visual when
If you guys look at this map.
Because you're not proposing to use the entire strip?
Nope.
Yeah, I didn't think so.
Nope. You'll have an area, you guys will show a little bit here. So here's what you have now. Here's the big strip of rain.
Right, right.
There'll be two linear ponds like this. They'll be the deeper parts. So in a big event, a major event, it would flood like it always has.
Right.
What happens now, the grating over the years has settled and you have some undulation to the ground, so you have some standing water. This static water will be at this level, so this will be about two feet lower than it is right now.
Okay.
So it's going to act like a sponge for the low rain events. Big storms still going to fill up same. Low events, light rains, this standing water is, is going to go away because it's going to drain itself into these two low ponds. And ours will enter it at this point here.
Okay.
So it'll basically take away the sponginess that's there for weeks on end.
Yeah. Because I know, I mean, I, I know at times kids, you know, and families play football down in this area, they could still do that up here.
They'll still do, they'll still do it here too.
Right, okay.
The only difference is it won't be spongy. That will drain very quickly into these low ponds.
Okay.
And there'll be standing water, a good majority of the time.
Okay.
So as I look around the table, there's only one engineer that's got their license. So what, what he's, what he's saying, what he's proposing seems reasonable from a conceptual standpoint. So from an engineering standpoint, is what, what he's discussing, what he's proposing, does that work?
It seems reasonable, yeah. I mean, obviously
I mean, we haven't seen, obviously, I'm putting you on the spot, I'm not, because you haven't seen calculations and everything like that, but I want to make sure that from a comfort level, from an engineering standpoint, you've got that comfort level.
Yeah, obviously, we'll have to look at the final design, but we do know that area's lower, so one, bringing a deeper pipe up, like we said, you know, hopefully can, you know, lower the overall water table of the area. We do have requirements for backyard drains, every three lots, 400 feet. We can work with, with Mr. Newfeld and the neighbors to look at, is there appropriate spots those can go? So even lowering the water table, we may locate a structure in the backyard that maybe a neighbor could tie into. So even if it didn't directly drain off there, or at least now we've got drainage structures we've never did, never had before, we extend easements to the rear property lines as we always do. Now a neighbor may have an opportunity to tie in, you know, a downspout or a low spot there. The open water areas, as we said before, you're going to have some open water areas that's part of the water quality design. But as we said, that pond has been in since the seventies, it, it needs some help. So it's not functioning as it did back in the seventies, and it's certainly not functioning as it would under today's design. So with cleaning that out, doing some improvements to it, you know, supplementing with, with what Mr. Newfeld has here, I think it could end up being a nice, hopefully, as Councilman Moore said, a benefit to the neighborhood, you know, overall, and hopefully help the overall drainage, accommodate his drainage, but also, you know, improve the drainage of what's, what's there now.
So the question, the question on the table is, allow them to move forward and explore that area on town property or not? And so I would ask, is there a motion one way or the other?
I'm going to put the motion forward. I think for reasons that I stated before, that if the developer decides to move ahead, that by having the drainage go onto the existing town pond, it gives not only a benefit to the town for improving that pond that was built in the seventies, but also can provide a benefit to the entire neighborhood. Again, I want to state, I'm not saying that I endorse the project. We are not the deciding body on it. The developer could walk away tomorrow. Someone else could buy the land tomorrow. I'm just saying that if he decides to go forward, that I think that is in the best interest of the neighborhood and the town.
I second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. So I'll ask first the board, any additional thoughts, comments, questions at this point? I'll ask staff, anything that hasn't been added to the record that you believe is pertinent and appropriate to be added to the record on this particular item? I'll ask Mr. Newfeld, any additional comments that you would like to make to the board that we haven't already heard?
No, thank you for your time. We are meeting tomorrow, I believe noon, with some of my staff and some of the neighbors. I haven't met them yet. We did have an informal neighborhood meeting before I had left in February, had about 14 of the neighbors there. I know you had quite a few here. I couldn't be here, I was on a volunteer trip. So we're meeting with, I don't know exactly how many of them, maybe, oh Friday.
Friday.
What did I say?
I think the media
I said, yeah.
Tomorrow.
Friday, yeah. So we'll address whatever concerns they have. I believe Mr. Valentine will be there, and if there's anything else that comes out of that
And I, and I think if you haven't already met the admirers, the admirers, I think are the, have offered
Yeah, we came to your
Oh, that's right.
They've, they've offered to host in, by way of gathering at their property and then walking with their wellies from there. So that's kind of what I saw on the note anyways, so. All right. See, no further discussion, motion on the table to, to allow them to move forward to extend, enhance the pond on town property. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so the motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Newfeld. Thank you for interested residents. All right, we will continue on our agenda. We have a few more, so put the two picks in, guys, and we'll, we'll see if we can get the rest of these items. We, we're moving on to action items. We have a request for a hold harmless agreement at 20 seating court. Mr. Valentine, if you wouldn't mind teeing that up for us.
Yep. Have a few, two documents coming around.
Yeah, please. Thank you, thank you.
No, that's fine. Thank you.
Two documents coming around. One is a sketch we received from the homeowner. They'd like to put a fence around their property. Second shows an aerial photo with our property and our drain in the back. We've looked at, at the property, walked it. The only issue we have, we don't have an issue with them going in the easement. Their initial sketch shows basically the fence over top of our pipe and over top of our structure. We're not supportive of it going over the top of our structure. You can't lift the top off of it as well as the potential for damage to our pipe. So staff is recommending about a three-foot, four-foot offset of our pipe, wanting to make sure they don't impact it. They would still be in a portion of that easement, so if you come back off that corner, it would be in the blue area slightly. It would be right over top of our pipe or right over top of the property line with the drain there, but with a three to four-foot offset of that area, we're supportive of it. Still have them sign a hold harmless agreement if we do have to get in there, we do have to dig up the pipe or anything else. You know, they would have signed the hold harmless agreement if the board is supportive, understanding we can remove the fence and do what we need to do, and it would be at their cost to, to replace the fence.
Seems pretty standard to me at this point.
Yep. And, and we've had some initial conversations with them, saying, you know, we're not going to let it go over top of the pipe, you know, for chance of damage and, you know, as well as, you know, any sort of impact on the drain, you know, covering itself, so.
Okay. Is there a motion on the table?
Some move.
Second. We've seconded further discussion. Anything additional to be added to the record there, Mark?
This one.
Okay. Seeing none, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motions carried. Move on to catch basin replacement. Mr. Tate.
Thank you.
You're just going to spend the rest of the night here and just be ready for six o'clock in one morning?
That's funny how he
Possibility.
He seems to talk faster as he gets later. He's much more set.
All right, Mr. Tate, lead us, lead us through.
You know, I can do it. So in the past, we've gone out, we've got, you know, approximately 4,100 catch basins within the town. Due to the age, a number of them are, you know, deteriorating, need to be replaced. You know, we've been kind of working on a replacement plan. We kind of started out outsourcing a lot of it and hiring. We've actually been doing some ourselves as kind of, you know, emergency situations and hazardous situations arise, but for a lot of the planned kind of neighborhood catch basins, that we've been keeping a running list. Joe's adding to it every day, quicker than we're able to, you know, knock some of them off. But we've kind of gone out for bid. Our last contract actually ended this past year, so we're kind of, we, we put out bid specifications a few weeks ago. We had a bid opening. We're fortunate that we had five contractors come in to kind of give us competitive bids for that. The lowest of those five was a company called Road Tech LLC. They're actually based out of Williamson, New York. Their office is directly next to the Wilbur's U-Polit, right on 104. They started out as a paving company, but they've been doing a lot of, or kind of getting, starting to get into drainage projects, catch basin replacements. As part of it, given that they had not been on things before and we have not actually worked with them, we did reach out, asked Joe Perkins, the deputy director, to reach out. He got a number of references from them, which we've contacted. If the companies were able to, kind of the references we were able to get ahold of, you know, a lot of them had very good things to say. Said, you know, they've done a lot of paving work, they've been doing it for years, they work for other municipalities, done good work, kind of knew that they were starting to get into more of the drainage work. And we did put the, the contract itself is a three-year contract, but we did put within the general specifications, if for some reason something doesn't work, we do have the option to kind of, you know, back out of that and reassess. We did, this year, we actually did do something different. Instead of, as we did in the past, just pricing out individual basins and individual basins only, with the idea that just cost, you know, cost-wise with how it had been bid, it wasn't, we couldn't justify the amount of money to, you know, pay the contractors with their additional services to dig up, you know, the crossovers in between the two basins on either side of the road. So this year, not only did we ask them to kind of provide us a lump sum price for the individual basins, but also to, for the ones that we know both basins and the crossover are bad, give us a lump sum to do everything, so that they're not digging it up one year and then us having to come back and dig up the road a second time, or, you know, even do one basin one year or the other basin or not, you know, the year after, and then the crossover the year after that, and kind of cause disruption year after year within the neighborhood. You know, their, their price for the individual basins and the kind of dual basin and crossover pipe was the cheapest. I, you know, would be comfortable kind of giving them a try. You know, like you said, we do have the option to kind of back out if there's an issue, but feel comfortable based on the fact that we've contacted the references for their past work.
Okay.
Okay.
Board, appears all across the, the board, from individual to equipment operator and everything in between. Road Tech lowest bid meeting all specifications. Nothing to say that we shouldn't accept them, so would entertain?
And really, even of all the companies, they had quite a bit of correspondence with me to kind of verify some of the bid specs above and beyond and rough lengths to kind of fully understand what they were bidding on as well.
Okay. So would entertain a motion of approval toward a contract to Road Tech? No? Yes?
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Okay. Moved by Linda, seconded by Bob. Further, further discussion? See, no further discussion, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Move on to items, see under action items, community center roof renovation phase three, Mr. Tate.
All right. So this is the second bid package we've put together. This is actually the third kind of phase of the four that we've broken the community center into. We started two years ago. This will actually be the, the third year. The, you know, we did only get two companies to bid on this, but I think it's been kind of consistent with the past. There's not a ton of, you know, local companies that do the kind of flat roof replacement work. Both companies actually have done work for us on the community center, you know, in the, the previous phases. J and B Installations actually won the bid for the first phase. Spring Sheet Metal Roof actually did it for the second. You know, they, I was happy to see that they both kind of bid and, you know, on this phase and are interested in continuing to do work on that roof. Didn't have problems with either of them, but obviously, kind of J and B came in as the, the cheaper of the two. In the, the past two years, just the same as this, we've put out the, kind of the bid with, for a base, you know, price for a 60 mil roof with a 20-year warranty for that. So we wanted to continue, that's the kind of minimum for the building code itself. However, we've also asked for, you know, if they were to kind of upgrade that to a 75 mil thickness roof with a 25-year warranty through the manufacturer, what that upcharge would be. You know, and given the, I mean, really, the, the minimal upcharge, you're paying the labor no matter what, but, you know, the minimal upcharge to give you five, you know, years more is
And it's, and it's been consistent, it's been consistent with the other two.
The, the past two years.
All right. Two, two vendors, we've worked with them both, we've had both the good results. The lowest of the two is J and B. Would entertain a motion toward the contract to J and B.
So moved.
Okay, so it's moved and seconded. Further discussion? Okay, and Eric, you'll have resolutions in for both of these for next week. All right. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We'll move on to our last item, our informational item. We have the application received for a hair salon at 1740, excuse me, 1738 Penfield Road. Mr. Pastel.
Yes, we have received that application. I'm going to be sitting in a public hearing for April 1st.
And that was the old Dennis office, right?
No, actually, it's a single-family residence right now, but there is a customary home occupation in there.
Which one? Okay, where?
It's the, it's the last one before you start going down into Old Penfield Road, next to the apartments, Skyline Apartments. There's a young lady that does
Got the tanning?
She's an esthetician. She's working, she's got a sign out there now.
It's not the tanning lady?
No.
Right next to her?
No. It's, and I think that her intent eventually is to, to move her business, she's a one-person operator, into the garage, but right now, the application is strictly for this hair salon coming in.
And the hearing is on the 1st of April?
1st of April, yes.
All right. That's an information item, so we don't require a vote on that. Okay. Jim, thank you for that update. There being no further business to come before the board, the March 11th, 2020 work session will stand adjourned at 10:00. Who has a cell phone?
10:32.
10:32 PM. Thank you to everyone that participated, and thank you to Penfield TV. I apologize, my cell phone is in my jack pocket. I apologize, my cell phone is in my jack pocket.